Officially open. Note that we will be recording this hearing. This hearing is for the renewal of the New Jersey Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Discharge to Surface Water Combined Sewer Overflow Permits for the Camden County Municipal Utilities Authority, the City of Camden, and Gloucester City. We often use the acronym NIGPTES in referring to the New Jersey Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Program. My name is Joe Manick. I am the Hearing Officer, and I am a Section Chief in the Bureau of Surface Water and Pretreatment Permitting within the Division of Water Quality at the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, otherwise referred to as the Department or NJDEP. Many Bureau staff have been involved in preparing the permits that are the subject of this hearing and also preparing for the hearing itself. Jonathan Hanischek will be providing instructions on how to provide testimony today. Molly Jacoby is the Case Manager for all three permits. Bennett Moss will provide an overview of the subject permits. Marcelo Gracia will be providing a Spanish translation. Also here today are many NJDEP staff, including Suzanne Rosenwinkel, Assistant Director of the Division of Water Quality, and others who are part of the CSO program or other parts of the NJDEP. I will now be providing some general information about the public hearing process, which should take about four minutes. Marcelo Gracia will then present this information in Spanish. We will then provide an overview of Microsoft Teams and a short summary of the permits in English, and then again in Spanish. This introductory information should take about 20 minutes in total. As established in the NIGPTES regulations of the New Jersey Administrative Code at 7:14A/15, this is a non-adversarial public hearing, which means that the department is here to listen and take testimony as part of our regulatory process. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the interested public, including the affected communities, with an opportunity to be heard on these proposed draft permit actions. The department will be accepting verbal and written statements today. Please note that verbal and written statements have equal weight. So if someone is not comfortable speaking and just has a written statement prepared, they can submit it electronically where it will receive equal weight with verbal testimony. The email address for written comments is dwqbswp@dep nj.gov. We will now add that address to the chat. The purpose of this hearing is to receive your comments and concerns. The department will respond to all significant and relevant comments, both verbal and written, in a response to comments document, which will be issued as part of the final NIGPTES permit decisions. The permatees and each person who has submitted comments will receive an electronic copy of the final decision document provided you give us your email address. We will also provide a copy to anyone who requests it, whether or not you submitted comments. Please be sure to leave your email address in the chat or send it to dwqbswp@dep nj.gov if you want to receive a copy. Please note that an additional evening public hearing scheduled to start at 6:00 PM has been announced for January 22 of 2024. Note that the public comment period has also been extended and will now end at 11:59 PM that same day on January 22, 2024. If you would like to provide verbal comments today, please put your name, organization, and email address in the chat, and I will call your name when it is your turn. When I call you, please clearly state and spell your first and last name for the record. We will have a court reporter assigned to transcribe the recorded testimony. If speakers are speaking on behalf of a particular organization, we ask that you identify that organization. We want to hear from everybody, and we want to give everybody here the opportunity to speak. In view of the time limitations, I am asking each speaker to limit their testimony to five minutes. Individual speakers may only testify once until we hear from every person who is here and wishes to give testimony. If time permits, and there is an opportunity at the end of the hearing and a person wants to testify for a second time, we will do our best to accommodate you. We are asking that all speakers and members of the audience respect the right of each person to be heard and refrain from any behavior that could interfere with the presentation of testimony. This hearing will end at the close of testimony or at noon, whichever occurs first. This same information I just read will now be read in Spanish by Marcelo Gracia. After that, we will turn the discussion over to Jonathan Hanischek, who will provide an overview of Microsoft Teams. After that, Bennett Moss will give some factual information regarding the NIGPTES permits. Marcelo?
Hola. La primera audiencia en este momento. El registro muestra que la hora es 10:04 y la audiencia pública ya está oficialmente abierta. Tengan en cuenta que grabaremos esta audiencia. Esta audiencia se lleva a cabo por la renovación de los permisos de descarga de aguas de superficie, desbordamiento de alcantarillado combinado del Sistema de Eliminaciones de Descargas de Contaminantes de Nueva Jersey, NJPDS, para la Autoridad Municipal de Servicios Públicos del Condado de Camden, Ciudad de Camden y Ciudad de Gloucester. A menudo usamos el acómo NJPDS cuando nos referimos al programa del Sistema de Eliminación de Descargas de Contaminantes de Nueva Jersey. Mi nombre es Joe Manick. Soy el oficial de la Audiencia Pública y el jefe de sección de la Oficina de Permisos de Aguas y Superficies y de Superficie y Pretatamiento de la División de Calidad del Agua en el Departamento de Protección Ambiental, también denominado el Departamento o NJDEP. Muchos empleados de la oficina han sido involucrados en preparar estos permisos, que son el tema de esta audiencia, y también en preparar esta audiencia. Jonathan Hanuschek brindará instrucciones sobre cómo dar testimonio hoy. Molly Jacoby es administradora de casos para los tres permisos. Bennett Moss brindará una visión general de los permisos en cuestión. Marcelo Gracia proveerá una traducción en español. También hay aquí hoy muchos empleados del NJDP, incluyendo a Susan Rosimico, sujiente de la División de Calidad del Agua, y otras personas que son parte del programa CSO o de otros programas en el NJDP. Ahora proporcionaré información general sobre el proceso de la audiencia pública, lo que tomará unos cuatro minutos. Marcelo Gracia presentará esta información en español. A continuación proporcionaremos una descripción general de Microsoft Teams y un resumen breve de los permisos en inglés y luego en español. Esta información introductoria tomará unos 20 minutos en total. Como se establecen las regulaciones del NJPDS del Código Administrativo de Nueva Jersey en 7:14A/15, esta es una audiencia pública no contenciosa, lo cual significa que el departamento está aquí para escuchar y tomar testimonio como parte de nuestro proceso regulatorio. El propósito de esta audiencia es proporcionar al público interesado, incluidas las comunidades afectadas, la oportunidad de ser escuchados con respecto a estas actividades de los borradores del permiso propuestos. El departamento aceptará declaraciones verbales y por escrito el día de hoy. Tengan en cuenta que las declaraciones por escrito y las verbales tendrán la misma importancia. Así que si alguien no se siente cómodo de hablar y solamente tiene una declaración escrita y preparada, puede enviarla electrónicamente y se le dará la misma importancia que el testimonio verbal. El correo electrónico para enviar comentarios por escrito es dwqbswp@dep nj.gov. Ahora añadiremos el correo al chat. El propósito de esta audiencia es recibir sus comentarios y preocupaciones. El departamento responderá a todos los comentarios adjectivos y relevantes, tanto verbales como por escrito. En un documento de respuestas a comentarios que se publicará como parte de las decisiones finales sobre los permisos del NJPDS. Los permisionarios y todas las personas que hayan presentado comentarios recibirán una copia electrónica del documento con la determinación final, siempre que nos hayan indicado su correo electrónico. También entregaremos copias a quienes los soliciten, aunque no hayan enviado comentarios. Asegúrense de dejar su correo electrónico en el chat o de enviarlo a dwqbswp@dep nj.gov si quieren recibir una copia. Por favor, tomen en cuenta que habrá una audiencia pública adicional esta tarde programada para empezar a las 6:00 PM. Ha sido anunciado para el 22 de enero de 2024. Tengan en cuenta que el periodo para enviar comentarios públicos ha sido extendido y ahora terminará el 22 de enero de 2024 a las 11:59 PM. Si desean presentar comentarios públicos de manera verbal hoy, escriban su nombre, organización, y correo electrónico en el chat. Los llamaremos por su nombre cuando sea su turno. Cuando los llame, díganle de electron su nombre y apellido con claridad para el registro. Tendremos un tagrafo judicial designado para transcribir el testimonio grabado. Si alguien hablara en representación de una organización, le pedimos que identifiquen la organización. Queremos escuchar a todos y darles la oportunidad de hablar aquí. Debido al tiempo limitado, les pido que su testimonio no exceda dos cinco minutos. Cada uno solamente podrá hablar una vez hasta que escuchemos a todas las personas que están aquí y desean dar testimonio. En caso de que el tiempo lo permita y sea posible hacerlo, al final de la audiencia, si una persona desea declarar por segunda vez, haremos todo lo posible para permitírselo. Pedimos que todos los que hablen y los miembros de la audiencia respeten el derecho de cada persona presente a ser escuchada y que eviten las conductas que pudieron interferir con la presentación del testimonio. Esta audiencia terminará cuando concluyen los testimonios al mediodía. Lo que ocurra primero. Esta misma información que acabo de leer ahora será leída en español por Marcelo Gracia. Después les daremos las palabras a Jonathan Hanuschek, quien presentará una descripción general de Microsoft Teams. A continuación, Bennett Moss dará información factual sobre los permisos del NJPDS.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Hanischek, and I will be speaking to you about commenting during the public hearing. In order to inform the NJDEP Hearing Officer of your interest in submitting verbal testimony, move your cursor around to open the Teams meeting toolbar, which will appear near the bottom center of your screen. Click on the chat icon to open the meeting chat box on the side of the screen. Type your name, organization, and email address in the "Type a new message" field at the bottom of the meeting chat box. When entering this information, use the following format: First name, last name, organization, and email address. See below for an example. Click the Send icon or press Enter on your keyboard to submit your message and notify the NJDEP Hearing Officer of your interest in submitting verbal testimony. To unmute or mute your microphone, toggle your microphone icon. To disable or enable your camera, toggle your camera icon. If you're using a phone, you can hit *6 to mute and unmute. The same information I just read will now be read in Spanish by Marcelo Gracia. After that, Bennett Moss will provide an overview of permits that were issued.
Hola. Mi nombre es Jonathan Hanuschek y les estaré hablando sobre cómo comentar durante la audiencia pública. Para informar al oficial de la Audiencia Pública del NJDP sobre su interés en dar testimonio verbal, mueva su cursor para que aparezca la barra de herramientas de organizaciones de Teams en la parte inferior de su pantalla. Haga clic en el ícono de chat para abrir el meeting chat a un lado de su pantalla. Esquiere su nombre completo, el nombre de la organización que represente, y su correo electrónico en el campo de que dice "Type a new message", escriba un mensaje nuevo, en la parte inferior del meeting chat. Cuando escriba esta información, use el formato nombre más apellido más organización más correo electrónico. Vea el ejemplo abajo. Haga clic en el ícono de enviar o presione la tecla Enter en su teclado para enviar su mensaje y notificar al oficial de audiencia pública sobre su interés en dar testimonio verbal. Para activar o silenciar el micrófono, active el ícono del micrófono. Para desactivar o activar la cámara, activa el ícono de la cámara. Si se ha conectado por teléfono, para activar y silenciar su micrófono, por favor oprima el asterisco seis. Esta misma información que acabo de leer será leída ahora en español por Marcelo Gracia. Después, Bennett Moss presentará un resumen de los permisos que se emitieron.
Hello, my name is Bennett Moss of the Bureau of Surface Water and Pretreatment Permitting. I'd like to give you some background on the subject of today's hearing: the renewal of the NIGPTES permits for the Camden County Municipal Utilities Authority, permit number NJ0026182, the City of Camden, permit number NJ0108812, and the Gloucester City permit number NJ0108847, where the draft permits were issued on November 9, 2023. All permits are posted on the NJDEP's Division of Water Quality CSO website. The comment period will end at 11:59 PM on January 22, 2024, in accordance with NJAC 7:14A-1510 and 1514. The individual NIGPTES CSO permits for the combined sewer systems of the City of Camden and Gloucester City are hydraulically connected to the Camden County Municipal Utilities Authority, abbreviated to CCMUAA Delaware #1, sorry, #1 Water Pollution Control Facility. Combined Sewer Overflows, or CSOs, are discharges from combined sewer systems. Combined sewer systems are sewers that were designed many decades ago to collect rainwater and snowmelt runoff, domestic sewage, and industrial wastewater in the same pipe. Combined sewer systems are still present in certain older cities in the state. CCMUAA owns and operates the wastewater treatment facility named the Delaware #1 Water Pollution Control Facility. The facility treats wastewater collected in a 226-square-mile service area in New Jersey, which includes the City of Camden and Gloucester City as customer communities. CCMUAA also owns and operates one CSO outfall located in the City of Camden. CCMUAA, the City of Camden and Gloucester City, own separate portions of one hydraulically connected combined sewer system. The City of Camden and Gloucester City do not own or operate any wastewater treatment facilities. Dry weather wastewater flows from the City of Camden and Gloucester City are conveyed to the CCMUAA Delaware #1 Water Pollution Control Facility for treatment. During wet weather events, when the conveyance capacity of the collection system and/or the wastewater treatment facility is exceeded, excess combined sewage flows pass through the CSO outfalls. In the City of Camden, there are 23 CSO outfalls. One outfall is owned and operated by CCMUAA and discharges combined sewage into Zone 3 of the Delaware River. The City of Camden owns and operates 22 CSO outfalls that discharge combined sewage to Zone 3 of the Delaware River, Cooper River, and Newton Creek. Gloucester City owns and operates seven CSO outfalls that discharge combined sewage to Zone 3 of the Delaware River and Newton Creek. To comply with federal and state CSO regulations, the City of Camden, Gloucester City, and CCMUAA have committed to meet the requirements of the presumption approach, which requires elimination or capture of a minimum 85% of the annual average combined sewage collected in the system during wet weather. As part of achieving this, the City of Camden will complete inspection and cleaning of 100% of its collection system by October 31, 2024, while Gloucester City will complete outfall cleaning by the end of 2025. As a result of these activities, new system flow monitoring will be conducted. Additional design details of future CSO control measures will be forthcoming as a result of updated flow monitoring. LTCP projects proposed to be required by these permits include designing and implementing the separation of combined sewer neighborhoods in Pensacola, as well as other improvements that will reduce street flooding in the neighboring Kramer Hill section of Camden. As per the long-term control plan and proposed NIGPTES permit requirements, these projects and others are projected to be completed over multiple NIGPTES permit cycles. This same information I just read will now be read in Spanish by Marcelo Gracia. After that, we will return to Joe Manick and begin taking testimony.
Hola. Mi nombre es Bennett Moss de la Oficina de Permisos de Aguas de Superficie y Pretatamiento. Les quiero compartir algo de información de fondo sobre el tema de la audiencia de hoy: la renovación de los permisos del NJPDS para el permiso número NJ0026182 de la Autoridad Municipal de Servicios Públicos del Condado de Camden, la Ciudad de Camden, número permiso NJ0108812, y la Ciudad de Gloucester, número permiso NJ0108847, donde se emitieron los permisos preliminarios el 9 de noviembre de 2023. Todos los permisos están publicados en el sitio web de CSO de la División de Calidad del Agua de NJDP. El periodo de comentarios terminará el 22 de enero de 2024 a las 11:59 PM, de acuerdo con los artículos 7:14A, 15.10, y 15.14 del Código Administrativo de Nueva Jersey. Los permisionales inmediatos de superficie de NJPDS para los sistemas de alcantarillado combinado de la Ciudad de Camden y la Ciudad de Gloucester están hidroeléctricamente conectados a Delaware #1 de instalación de control de contaminación del agua de la Autoridad Municipal de Servicios Públicos del Condado de Camden, abreviada como CCMUAA. Los desbordamientos de alcantarillado combinado, o CSO, son descargas del Sistema de Alcantarillado Combinado. Los sistemas de alcantarillado combinado son alcantarillas que se diseñaron hace décadas para recolectar el agua de lluvia y de cielo, aguas residuales domésticas, y aguas residuales industriales en la misma tubería. Los sistemas de alcantarillado combinado todavía están presentes en algunas ciudades más antiguas del estado. CCMUAA posee y opera una planta de tratamientos de aguas residuales llamada Delaware #1 de instalación de control de la contaminación del agua. La instalación trata las aguas residuales recolectadas en un área de servicio de 226 millas cuadradas en Nueva Jersey, que incluye la Ciudad de Camden y la Ciudad de Gloucester como comunidades de clientes. CCMUAA también posee y opera un emisario de CSO localizado en la Ciudad de Camden. CCMUAA, la Ciudad de Camden, y la Ciudad de Gloucester poseen partes separadas de un sistema de alcantarillado combinado conectado hidroeléctricamente. Ni la Ciudad de Camden o la Ciudad de Gloucester poseen y operan ninguna instalación de tratamiento de aguas residuales. Los flujos de aguas residuales durante tiempos secos de la Ciudad de Camden y la Ciudad de Gloucester se traspondan a la planta de tratamiento de aguas residuales de Delaware #1 de CCMUAA. Cuando se excede la capacidad del transporte del sistema de recolección y/o la planta de tratamiento de aguas residuales, el exceso de aguas residuales combinadas pasa a través de los emisarios de las CSO. En la Ciudad de Camden hay tres emisarios de CSO, y un emisario es poseído y operado por CCMUAA, y descarga aguas residuales combinadas en la zona 3 del río Delaware. La Ciudad de Camden posee y opera 22 emisarios de CSO que descargan aguas residuales combinadas a la zona 3 del río Delaware, el río Cooper, y el arroyo Newton. La Ciudad de Gloucester posee y opera siete emisarios de CSO que descargan aguas residuales combinadas en la zona 3 del río Delaware y el arroyo Newton. Para cumplir con las regulaciones estatales y federales de CSO, la Ciudad de Camden, la Ciudad de Gloucester, y la CCMUAA se han comprometido a cumplir con los requisitos del enfoque de presencia que exige la eliminación o la captación de un mínimo de 85% del promedio anual de aguas residuales combinadas recolectadas en el sistema durante el clima húmedo. Como parte de lograr esto, la Ciudad de Camden completará la inspección y limpieza de 100% de su sistema de recolección antes del 31 de octubre de 2024, mientras que la Ciudad de Gloucester completará la limpieza de los emisarios para fines de 2025. Como resultado de esas actividades, el nuevo sistema se realizará un monetero de flujo. Próximamente se publicarán detalles de diseño adicionales de futuras medias de control de CSO como resultado del monitoreo de flujo actualizado. Los proyectos LTP propuestos que serán requeridos por estos permisos incluyen diseño e implementación de la separación de alcantarillado combinado en vecindarios en Pensacola, así como otras mejoras que reducirán la inundación de las calles en la sección vecina de Kramer Hill de Camden. Según el Plan de Control a largo plazo y los requisitos propuestos de los permisos del NJPDS, se predefinirán esos proyectos y otros entre varios ciclos de permisos del NJPDS. Esta misma información que acabo de leer ahora será leída en español por Marcelo Gracia. Después volveremos con Joe Manick. Empezaremos a tomar testimonios.
Alright, thank you for those introductions. I'm looking through the chat, and I see Lucia Osborne was the first person to put their email address in. If you'd like to provide some comments now, now's your time. If you would like to just get a copy of the final permit, that's fine as well. So if you'd like to speak, now go right ahead.
Hey, thanks so much. I was just requesting a copy of the final permit, so I'll yield my time.
Okay, thank you. We will get you a copy of the final permit. Next up, I have Jim Cummings.
Hi, Jim Cummings with Urban Promise. That's Cummings spelled C-U-M-M-I-N-G-S. And so, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this issue. And my beginning is, I want to tell you why we at Urban Promise are students, are interested in these issues, and also what can we do to be part of a solution. Fifteen years ago, I was driving along the Admiral Wilson Boulevard, and I spotted a bald eagle. I convinced myself it had to be a seagull. Two weeks later, I saw a pair of bald eagles in the same location. Truly got my curiosity, my work with Urban Promise, outdoor education. I'd been taking young people all over the country to some of the most pristine, beautiful waterways, including our Pine Barrens locally, but the Everglades, Maine, all over. And I was really wanting to see what that river was about. This is the tidal Cooper. I got my canoe, went out there early May, and I was absolutely blown away by what I saw. The cherry blossoms were out, great blue herons, egrets, snapping turtles sunning themselves on logs. I took all kinds of pictures. I went back into our high school that Monday, showed the students what I had seen. They said, "Mr. C, you're crazy. We don't go near that water. There's dead bodies in it. There's abandoned cars. We stay away." I said, "That's not what I saw." So we started doing water testing. A year later, we started building our own boats, canoes, and kayaks at a program called Urban Boat Works in the City of Camden. We're actually the largest boat builder, well, the only boat builder in the City of Camden these days. But in doing all that, we learned about something that I had never heard of, a combined sewer outflow. And as a result of that, that became a real concern and an issue of advocacy for my students. And four of them are here today. These students are river guides during the summer. They take people out in canoes and kayaks. This past summer, we took over 800 people out onto the tidal Cooper and into the back channel. The work that's been done in the past 15 years is extraordinary. But we are concerned about combined sewer outflows, discharges, regular testing. There are times when we don't get on the water. But yet, so much infrastructure is being built throughout the tidal, the back channel, that actually allows us to get onto the water. So I just kind of finish with this question. How can we help get this issue of combined sewer discharges mitigated so we can safely enjoy Camden's most beautiful natural resource? Thank you.
Alright, thank you for your comment. Next up, we have Jonathan Compton.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Compton, last name spelled C-O-M-P-T-O-N. And I'm the Director of the Center for Environmental Transformation, which is an environmental advocacy organization located in the waterfront south neighborhood. We work with the public to help address their concerns about the environment in the city, and flooding and sewage overflows is definitely something that residents have brought to our attention as a concern. We are pleased to see that the ongoing efforts that have been made to address this issue and are happy to see this permit moving forward. I have three comments to make. The first one has to do with residents' understanding that there is contamination to floodwaters whenever there is localized flooding. And my question is, will the permit require that sewage released during CSO events be measured, if that is technically possible to do that at all of the different outlets? And will there be a mechanism to share publicly information about whether or not a CSO event has occurred during localized flooding events so that local residents will know whether or not they possibly have been exposed to contaminated water? My second comment has to do with climate change. It's not clear how climate change will impact the performance of the system, and I'm curious if the permit will require adjustments to the plan based on updated precipitation models and projections for increase in the tide levels of the river. And then my third comment is about the funding for this project and about the length of time that it will take to implement it. So like I said, we are very much in favor of the efforts to mitigate this issue. But 15 years is a long... Fifteen years is a long time and residents have been dealing with combined sewer overflows now for many decades. So we would like to see that timeframe shortened if at all possible. And we realized that adequate funding is a primary factor in determining how long it will take to complete the work. From what I understand, if I'm understanding correctly, a significant portion of the funding is the responsibility of the city of Camden. However, the the CCM UA services the entire county. So we would like to see if it's possible to work with the CCM UA to share the costs with the county at the county level. And if funding could be allocated in different ways at the county level to help implement this plan since the city of Camden services sewage from the entire area, which includes many wealthy areas. And we don't want to stretch out the implementation time longer than necessary. So we would really like to see that shortened from the 15 years so that residents can see benefits much sooner. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. And I just want to reiterate, we will not be answering anything specifically here today. We are going to collect all the comments. The comment period has been extended to January 22 at 11:59 PM. After we get all of our comments and we can weigh them, we will put them together in a response to comments document that we will issue with our final decision. And again, anyone who has made comments or who asked for a copy of the final will get responses at that time. So thank you. And next we have Sara Lee Gonzalez, accompanied by four students. Go right ahead.
Hello, I'm Sara Lee Gonzalez. That's spelled S A R A L Y G O N Z A L E Z. I'm the environmental education program director, Urban Promise Camden. As Jim said, we takes Camden residents, students and just other public members on the river directly every summer and throughout the year we build boats. I'm accompanied by four students who will also be making brief comments later. They are Camden residents, some of them, but they go to school in Camden. They enjoyed all that Camden has to offer and they would like to say something about it. But as for my comments, I, from my understanding, it looks like there has been a shift in policy for the cost, as the previous speaker just said, for onto Camden residents. I see that as an environmental justice problem because they have less, Camden residents have, most likely have less resources and the benefits of the clean river extend beyond Camden. Also, as Jim said, there's been a lot of money being poured into the Camden waterfront and green spaces, which is amazing. And I would, we would just like to see quicker, quicker action of reducing CSOs in the Camden area simultaneously with these waterfront parks like Kramer Hill, the formation of hopefully Petty's Island and Sadler's Marina. We're pushing, we're pushing for more recreational use of the water, but we want to see healthier outcomes on the water as well. And also maybe some increased monitoring to identify dry spills. From what I understand, on the, on the permit, there is monthly monitoring, but that doesn't really count for the dry spills that occur and the increased precipitation that we are experiencing due to climate change. Yeah. So thank you for holding the space for us to voice our opinions. And now I'm going to give some space for our students, who are Zaire Seaberry, Brianna Benelli, Sage Stevens and Jamira McKeever. We live and go to school in Camden, so we obviously want clean water with no combined sewage overflow. We want solutions quickly so that one day we don't have to worry about our health. We also want to see more people enjoying Camden and its beautiful views, rivers, parks for how it really is. Thank you.
Okay, so you're, you're done. Your students are complete?
Yeah, you're done? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Next up, I have John Compton.
I was just adding my email address for completeness. I already went. Thank you.
Oh, 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 I see. I'm sorry. Thank you. All right. And then we have Mike Morgan.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Mike Morgan, Waterfront South resident. So my comments were the LTCP anticipates being at 78% captured by 2028, but won't be at 85% until 2034. As they're proposing to evaluate the performance of the system for further design and evaluation. So the further design to reach 85% would mostly be from storage tanks. So one recommendation to the DEP would be to move up the evaluation earlier and consider staggering the evaluation and planning and all, and that phase for the various tanks as this would allow water quality benefits sooner. So that's comment number one. The second one is noted. The affordability is a major constraint, especially in the city of Camden. So would CCM UA or DEP help identify other methods of financing these projects like leveraging federal funding? And my, my understanding of the CSO plan is that previously, previously, the, the cost was going to be countywide as opposed to currently, it looks like the cost burden is falling on the city of Camden. So I guess to be more specific, the consequence of the change is that the entire cost falls on the city of Camden as opposed to the county. As a result, when the EPA affordability calculation is applied to Camden's 75,000 residents with a lower income as opposed to Camden County's half a million with higher income, the plan will now be finished in 15 years in order to be affordable instead of the five years originally planned. So it puts more of a cost burden on the environmental justice community of Camden. And there will be an additional 10 years of combined sewage overflows and flooding. The service agreement between CCM UA and the 37 municipalities states that CCM UA is allowed to do this work for Camden. And that was how CCM UA was able to pay for earlier improvements. So my hope would be that CCM UA could return to the original policy and undertake the remaining Camden CSO work itself, thereby reducing the cost burden to Camden City residents and allowing for a significant acceleration of the work. And that's my comment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comment. Next I have Patricia Dunkack. And actually Patricia has, you've copied, you've commented before, so we have your, the spelling of your name. But if we have new people who come out and would like to speak, please spell your name as well for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. Hi, this is Patricia Dunkack and I'm with New Jersey Future. We will be submitting written comments that go into more detail, so I'll keep this short. I do just want to thank the DEP for drafting these permits and also for the opportunity to provide comments. And New Jersey Future, we appreciate the addressing water quality issues by reducing flooding from CSO discharges. And we also want to ensure the proper maintenance of infrastructure and that includes green infrastructure. So at New Jersey Future, we believe that new green infrastructure is an integral stormwater management practice and it is an essential climate resilient solution. So we ask that DEP prioritize controls and projects based on the impact of CSO volume reduction of water quality improvements. And that includes green infrastructure. We also ask the department work with permittees to ensure the high impact green infrastructure is considered as part of green infrastructure projects as well to address both solutions simultaneously. And we also ensure that maintenance plans are rolled out for permittees to ensure that the impacts from these flood mitigation projects are maximized and working properly and being maintained. We also ask that permittees work collaboratively across municipalities because stormwater doesn't just follow municipal boundaries. So we ask that the city of Gloucester, Camden City and CCM UA all work collaboratively on green infrastructure projects. And we know they already are through the Camden Smart Initiative. So we just ask that they continue and also provide updates on the projects that they're working on. And I also, again, just want to reiterate the affordability concerns that several folks have already brought up before. But we just ask that timelines are shortened so that they don't experience these long-term health impacts from CSOs, but also that affordability is maintained and, you know, ratepayers are not, you know, facing the burden of increased rates. So like I said, we'll be submitting more detailed written comments, but thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Next up, I have Kevin Barfield, but I don't see your email address. So if you could include that in the chat when you get a chance, go right ahead. Okay, I see you're requesting a final copy. You will be copied on the final decision. All right. I don't see.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was trying to get my, my mic off, unmute. Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Kevin Barfield. I'm part of a DJ Justice Group Camden for Clean Air. And I think, you know, following up on some of the questions and the concerns of, you know, previous speakers. Now, I'm hoping that the DEP does monitor the project and actually do increased monitoring. Because again, you know, a lot of people are dealing with backup sewer and, and their homes being notified that when these particular incidents are taking place, that their, that this water is contaminated with fecal matter. So I'm hoping that, you know, again, that that's all included monitoring, especially after major storms, that there's automatically a testing of the water. And then my question also is this, is the fact that, you know, again, here we go with Camden city residents being burdened with, you know, major project when it's like a lot of these roads and these corporations where a lot of this runoff is coming into is corporations and county roads, you know, that flow through Camden. So why should it be strictly on Camden residents? I think that that's, you know, definitely another exploitation of the residents. And who's speaking on behalf of the residents to say, you know, to kind of mediate how this project is being done? And again, 15 years is a long time to be waiting for something to be done about these areas that are basically in these high flood zones that, that you have backup overflow coming from Pensalken and even parts of Gloucester that's coming into Camden City. So, you know, I hope that these got, you know, that you guys work on the timeline and the source of funding. So that way the burden is not left on Camden residents to pay for, again, other, you know, other surrounding, you know, municipalities, your contributions to Camden. That's it.
Okay, thank you for your comment. I don't see any additional names. Oh, Suzanne Atman, I see you just popped in. If you'd like to go, you can go right now.
Yes. Hi. Good morning. I'm going to leave my camera off because I have a really bad cold, so apologies. Thank you for having this hearing. It's great that in these permits that they've started to make some major changes with the long-term control plan, including incorporating green infrastructure, system-wide cleaning and expansion of the plan to take in more combined sewer overflow. Some concerns and questions and recommendations since, and I'm echoing here what some others have already shared. Since CCM UA is no longer completing the remaining work on the CSO system in Camden and it's the responsibility of the city, the plan will now be finished in 15 years versus originally it was, it was only five years. And then, you know, in doing that, the environmental justice burden on the Camden community, as the last speaker just mentioned, will remain high for another 10 years of CSO and flooding, again, versus the five years originally planned. Is the public involved in these decisions? These are really critical decisions, as the last commenter mentioned. How can they be involved in those decisions, required to be involved in those decisions? And what would it take for, for CCM UA to return to that original policy and undertake that, the remaining Camden CSO work itself? Again, thereby reducing the cost burden on residents and allowing for, for faster acceleration of the work. If financing of the project is the issue, which it could be, I don't know the dynamics there. There are alternate ways to go about this, given the federal funding, which has been released since the long-term control plans were drafted, right? So maybe that wasn't taken into consideration when that decision was made. But now with all of this federal funding, this seems like a good time to revisit that. And, and the permit holders can take advantage of this funding through the water bank as well as through technical support from the EPA and the, which, which has a lot of support around how to develop a stronger financial capability analysis. So is there, is there a role that the NJDP can play in actively encouraging and working with the CCM UA to return to that original policy and undertake the remaining Camden work itself? One other thing, so I think that, that seems to be a big theme from, from this hearing. Another, just on a related note, I, you know, some other permit holders are actually going beyond the 85% required. I believe Hackensack was at 87%. I think Gutenberg was even beyond that. Sorry, I don't have the numbers. But can, can this region go beyond the 85% goal? And, and, you know, get closer to 100% as somebody said earlier, really strive for that as part of the long-term control plan. And just a couple of quick things in terms of climate change. There's still, you know, as we've mentioned before, there's still less clarity in the language in these permits around how CSO controls address climate change and sea level rise. Somebody mentioned this earlier. Can that be clarified? How will the permit holder be required to adjust the plan to include new precipitation models and projections, especially in light of the inland flood protection role? I'm not going to comment on public engagement because we've had several hearings on that. But since the public is here, again, it's important that the requirements around engaging and involving the public in all of these decisions on the CSO supplemental teams is as rigorous as possible. We want to ensure that the CSO supplemental teams are representative of the communities of the overburdened neighborhoods. So that recruitment for those teams is, is equitable and transparent and that outreach to the community is equitable, broad, effective and transparent. Again, so that we have true representation of the community's voice in these meetings, in the implementation of these plans moving forward. So whatever you can do to strengthen the requirements and certainly enhance the guide that you're creating around public engagement to hold, help hold folks accountable to those standards would be greatly appreciated. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. I noticed Lucia Osborne has put her, you put your name in again, but Scott Triber hasn't spoken yet. So I'm going to go directly to Scott because he hasn't spoken yet. Scott Triber, go ahead.
Thank you, Joe. Scott Triber, Executive Director of the Camden County MUA. I would just request that any of the folks that have discussed having a plan accomplished in five years and/or that the CCM UA was strictly responsible for the costs. If, if anyone has documentation related to that, those, you know, commitments or promises that have been talked about today, if you could please bring it to my attention, all of the. All of the publications that have been sent to the NJDP prior to the last iteration had a schedule that went out twenty-plus years and never commented on who was going to pay for these costs, specifically which permities. And, and those documentation, you know, publications were being sent to NJDP starting in, in two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen and have continued on. It's only within the last several months that the schedule has been shortened substantially to be within fifteen years and not to go out to twenty-plus years that was originally conveyed. So again, my request would be to have any documentation that shows a five-year schedule submitted to, to me so that we could take that into consideration. That would be extremely helpful. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Lucia Osborne, your turn.
Hey, thanks. I changed my mind about not having comments before. So, you know, we're talking a lot about the affordability of this, and I get that that is a huge burden. But the reality is, is there's money out there to pay for this. There's a clause in ARPA right now that says if the improvements are in, are in your long-term control plan for a CSO community, you can qualify for up to eighty percent principal forgiveness. And that's not the only, you know, federal opportunity out there. So I just want to point out that there are, you know, a lot of different sources that we could be tapping to pay for this and to do this and to get this done for our residents sooner because, you know, fifteen years is a long time. And a lot of the kids here who are, you know, speaking today, they'll be grown and gone in fifteen years, right? They'll, they'll be somewhere else. Let's try and make it so that the people who are living in Camden now can see these benefits. And I know it's not easy and I know it's a lot of work, but there's, there's a lot of federal money out there that we should be going for. So I would like to see the state supporting Camden in, in getting that federal money. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. I see a couple of general comments in the chat. Jim Cummings, would you like to speak again, or is what you, is what you put in the chat sufficient for now?
I'll, I'll just very briefly state this. So the investment that has been made in that back channel, public, private money, you know, Petty's Island, I realize that's Sitgo remediation, but Harrison Avenue landfill, the creation of the Kramer Hill Waterfront Park with a kayak ramp that takes us out onto the Title Cooper into the back channel. If you were to add all that up, that's probably well over a billion dollars that's being spent in that area to get us able to recreate in that beautiful natural space. And when I look at, I think it was about forty-five million dollars in the gateway, excuse me, in the Kramer Hill Waterfront Park. And many of those dollars came from funds that were settlement damages to build this beautiful park, and yet we're continuing to pollute. I just find that somewhat, I don't know, hypocritical or whatever. And, and, you know, we spend so much time there taking people out in the canoes that we build and enjoying just the beauty. And all we want is just to be able to enjoy it and, and having safe, healthy water to do so. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I think we're caught up with everyone who wanted to speak. Is there someone that I had missed? Okay, we are scheduled to go until noon. What I'm going to do is I'm just going to pause for about three or five minutes. And we will start up again at, I guess, eleven o'clock. And if there are no comments at that time, then we will end the hearing. But we'll, we'll give people some more time. Maybe some other people want to log on as well. So at eleven o'clock, we'll, I'll check back in. All right, it's eleven o'clock. The only thing that I see in the chat is a crest from S. Gonzalez for the, the final plan. So we will send you a copy of the final permit decisions after the public comment period is over. We wait all the comments and we've made our final decision. I'm going to give it just in case, another minute. And if anyone has anything they want to say, I'll check back in another minute. If not, then we'll close the hearing. All right, I see there is a comment in the chat from Kevin. We can take that as a comment as it is and then respond to that as part of the final decision document. Or if you'd like to take some time right now and expand on that while you're here, that's your decision.
Yes, I'd like to expand on that. You know, now that I'm, I'm thinking about this and I'm just kind of doing this visual of the, the amount of redevelopment that has taken place here in Camden over, over the years. And even some of these particular different projects in some of these communities where, you know, the community is not aware of some of these major upgrades, if you want to call them that, in their communities. And then all of a sudden, they're getting these bills and they're wondering why and how, you know, their taxes are going up. And something like this is something that's major because one of the problems that Camden residents are finding in this particular is everything is going up in reference to taxes. And where is these costs coming from? And who's making these decisions? And then they're finding out after the fact, you know, that, oh, now we're paying for this sewer treatment or this upgrade in this particular system, the supposed improvement. But these developers, and some of these projects, like I'm saying, these downtown especially, where you have all these different corporations coming in, this causing more additional runoff because now you got all this concrete. And, you know, so again, it's not fair for Camden Burton, Camden residents to continue to be burdened because they're being priced out of their house as we speak. The few homeowners that are holding on to their properties, the fact that something like this is going to be a burden on them that they know nothing about. And how is it, how is it really improving their particular communities? Because I'm seeing even in Gloucesters, one area around, I mean Gloucester, where they spend so much money that's supposed to be relieving flood, even in Kramer Hill River Road. They spend millions, they spend money trying to improve the flooding, but it never works. So, you know, how are we going to make sure that even with these particular overflows of these projects, that they're actually going to improve these areas that are high flood zones? So I think, you know, things need to be really thought out. Because again, as, as, as a mother, you know, as a person, a mother who still own her home, and again, taxes are going up and services going down, is this not fair for the burden to be on Camden residents when a lot of these projects that's taking place in this, in this city is also contributing to this situation with, with our, with our streets being flooded? I just wanted to say that. That's the clarity on that. And, and when you talk about City Hall, even like right now, I have not heard one meeting where City Hall has presented something like this to, to the community to make them aware of, okay, so what is going to be increased? Because CCUM, if they're not paying their CCUM bill, they're taking these people's houses now. They've been taking their houses from not paying their CCUM bill. So if this, so if something like this, a project is going to be going, then that, that puts them in another situation. Did they, not only did their water bill from American Waters and the other one, provider, this providing service on water service, is, their bills is increasing, but your CCMU bill is, has been increasing besides a project like this. It's not the direct result of Camden residents. It shouldn't be burdened with that. So I think the state should really take serious into account. And I truly want to know and understand who from the administration was a part of accepting this plan and this permit, have CCUM, and when in front of them, who have they been that actually has approved and have had any sale input into this particular project? And that's my passion is, is a full Camden resident being born and raised and seeing how our, our residents have been exploited over the years.
All right. Thank you for your comment. I don't see anyone else who is interested in commenting. I haven't seen anyone join the chat for a while either or the, or the hearing. So what I'm going to do is I'm just going to wait another one or two minutes. And if no one else would like to speak again, or we have no new attendees, I will close the hearing. So let's wait till eleven oh nine. All right. I, I don't see any additional comments in the chat. Before we close though, I'd like to mention there is a public hearing on this same topic tonight at six o'clock. And also, we extended the public comment period until January twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-four. The public hearing will be evening only on that day. It will be at six o'clock until close of testimony. And the end of the public comment period, I, I should specify, will be eleven fifty-nine PM on January twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-four. So thank you all, and I wish you a good day. Take care.